Okay, good morning, everybody. Staff meeting Tuesday, July 9th. A lot of good things we're talking about today. Tom, go ahead and direct the traffic.
We're going to have a discussion on legislative summary and maybe a little bit of discussion on kind of where we're going in the future. So I'm going to turn it over to Tanya, who can take it from here.
Hey, good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. So this morning we have, I think, and I'm a little biased, but I think we have one of the best lobbyist groups in the state, and that is Watkins Public Strategies, Jason Watkins and Jessica Lucas, who are our lobbyist group, and they are here to talk to us this morning about the 2024 session. They, of course, work on our behalf for our legislative platform and then also help us, of course, during the legislative session throughout when bills come up that we are not aware of and help us to communicate with us and help testify and urge on behalf of Sedgwick County. So I'm going to turn it over to Jessica, who's going to talk about our wins through the legislative session and then talk about those things that occurred throughout the process.
Tanya, I'm going to turn it over to Jason first, and then I'll get started.
Thank you. I just wanted to quickly thank Tanya for the kind words. We live here, so what matters to you guys matters to us. So it's an honor and a privilege to represent the county. I think it helps drive the passion that we have with it. Also wanted to just quickly recognize Nathaniel Blank. Jessica and I get all the attention, but he's kind of the behind the scenes, boots on the ground guy. He works very hard for you every day in Topeka. He also watches every single minute of every meeting that you have. So, sorry Nathaniel. So with that, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll turn it over to Jessica.
Good morning, and I also want to echo that it is an honor and privilege to work with all of you. I want to specifically shout out Tom and Tanya. We are in constant communication with both of them. Tanya took over things, I think, two years ago, and it is a lot. And she's done a remarkable job, and we just really appreciate the opportunity to work with both of them. But with her being the lead, I think she's doing an incredible job and I want to give her some credit for that this morning. I am going to send around an overview that I'm going to be speaking from. So yeah, if you want to. But essentially, as we look at the agenda from this year, it was a really good year for Sedgwick County and the priorities that you identified. I'm going to run through that this morning. I don't know if you have your actual agenda. It looks like Tanya has some copies over here, too, which may be helpful to take a peek at. But if we start from the first of that agenda, from an appropriation standpoint, Calm Care, while you don't directly receive that $10 million, it was a priority of yours that we continue to see reimbursement for behavioral health expenses that are happening at the hospital until we get the hospital up and running. We did see the addition of dollars so that we can go ahead and build out the Sedgwick County psychiatric hospital to 104 beds. And that came at the end, but we were really, really glad to get that across the line. And then for Calm Care, the continuation of the mental health and schools program, the sum total of that was $13.5 million, I believe, Tim. I was kind of going off memory when I did this, but you guys see a lot of those dollars for the work that you're doing in schools. Commissioner Dennis, I know how important the IDD money in particular has been to you, so it kind of outlined that. But there were significant investments made in the IDB community this year, including the fact that the governor vetoed some of these funding provisions and the legislature overrode and said, no, this is a priority to us and we're going to figure it out. So you see quite a bit of investment that was made there. I think everyone agrees that's long overdue and incredibly important. So if we move then into the corrections part of your agenda, we did see not quite what you were hoping for. It was a $5 million hope. And again, that's among the system, not specific to Sedgwick County. But there was a $2.5 million investment made for additional intensive supervision with Department of Corrections. And the Health Department also saw some additional resources as well. Again, not quite the 1.4, but it was an addition and we will always be happy to see more resources. So we get into the policy section. On juvenile corrections, we didn't see anything specific to what you guys had outlined. I think that's perhaps something that we spend a little more time talking about as we look at 2025. There was a bill that was brought by the Secretary that passed that would allow juvenile offenders in the custody of the Secretary to get certain programming and educational opportunities. So if they have an individual who wants to go to WSU Tech and get training for something, they have the ability now to enable them to do that. So I think in general, that's a good thing. For Division of Finance, revenue neutral, again, not quite what you had outlined here, but we did see an adjustment made on the revenue neutral rate that at least allows you to set your budget based on the estimates as opposed to the actuals. The problem there, of course, as you know, is that you didn't know what the actual were. So at least now you're making a good faith effort based on what your experts say or the estimates, and you're not going to be punished if you end up exceeding that. And then moving into the DUI component, that bill did pass. The Health Department bill passed, and I want to give a shout out to Representative Susan Humphries, who was the one who really spearheaded that. On the human resources side, certainly has been a lot of discussion about K-13. Nothing happened there. That is a priority, though, of the Speaker. He recognizes that the current system isn't great. Now, what the solution is? We know the solution of bringing people to K-12 is very expensive. I don't know what the solution will end up being, but I know that that conversation is going to continue. However, they were successful in House Bill 2711 to at least amend so that the working after retirement provisions, that penalty is no longer in play. Of course, a big success in getting the sunset extended for the Nuisance Abatement Act. You know, in a perfect world, it would have, yeah, I'm sorry, it was removed, which is the perfect world that we want. So we won't have to deal with that anymore. We didn't see anything on the cell tower zoning. Now, we had had a conversation and kind of decided that we probably were not quite prepared to take that on this year. So again, I know that's something that's going to be looked at for next year. Property taxes, I think everyone understands that there is frustration in the ultimate tax bill in regard to property taxes. However, we did see legislation finally at the end that will at least increase the residential exemption to $75,000 from $42,000. So it's a tiny bit of relief, but no doubt that's going to be a priority for next year. Public Works, same conversation. These things were not taken up. Suspended driver's license law, through a lot of hard work of Commissioner Howell and others, saw that finally get to the finish line. And then, of course, you can now get your Sedgwick County Zoo Plate, among many others, if that's your choice. So that's an overview from your agenda that we worked on this year. And of course, you know, Sedgwick County is probably the client that I don't want to speak for Jason and what keeps him up at night, but that I worry about because you're so broad. I mean, look at all of these different buckets of things that we are trying to track, and the three of us are working really hard to try and make sure that nothing slips through. So it is really encouraging to know that we were able to do so much this year. In addition to that, no surprise, we spent a lot of time talking about the homelessness grant funding, which inch forward in ways that at times look really promising, then ultimately did not end up moving forward. But as we often say, you know, everything is a marathon until it's a sprint. And no doubt that an issue like homelessness, which was the first time that we've heard that, get so much attention in the State House. So in some ways, it's not surprising that we weren't able to bring that to fruition, though I know from a timing standpoint, would have been preferable to go ahead and have that done. But it did incite some meaningful conversation. And I don't think that that's the end of that by any means. And certainly, we know that the challenges that homelessness presents to our community are not going away and will need to continue that dialogue at the state level. We also saw additional efforts at the end of session around the government competition bill. We did get that language to a place that, from the guidance you guys offered us, at least seemed like it would be livable. Fortunately, you don't have to make that decision because it was vetoed. And I don't see a scenario where, at least in the next couple of years, it doesn't continue to be vetoed if it is brought up. But we were at least happy that we could find a way to make that narrow. And I give a lot of credit to Jason for thinking through that and working on that in a way that got it to a place that was livable if it ended up being enacted into law. Where it gets challenged, challenging in situations where it feels like, oh, my gosh, we have to make sure this is something we can live with because it gets dumped into a bill with a lot of other ideas that are seemingly good. And so then, whether it's legislators taking a vote or the governor making a decision, they're having to weigh, what is all the good in this versus all the junk? And how do we, you know, what do we do? So that's why it's important to us that even though on its own was easy to reject, we didn't know what people were going to do placed in a bill with other things that they do value. So happy that that ended up having the outcome that it did and will continue to work to make sure that language is at least workable if the proponents of that continue to move forward. And I suspect that they will. And the last piece, I know Commissioner Howell presented testimony regarding the constitutional amendment around property tax cap and those ideas. Happy to say that that did not move forward, which at the beginning of the session, I wasn't 100% sure was going to be the case. So pleased that that did not move forward, but also a conversation that I think will continue. And I think your voice will be really helpful in and trying to determine what makes sense and how do you make sure. I think he made an excellent point when he talked about putting something in statute versus a constitutional amendment. Right? We are really locked in in an unfavorable way if we get something wrong in a constitutional amendment. So if we are thinking that there's value to doing something, we should really think through that in a statute framework, where if something goes wrong, you have a mechanism to fix it. So appreciated that feedback to the legislature, and I definitely think that they heard and understood that message. So with that, happy to field any questions. And then if you want to touch on where you're at for 2025, we can start to have that discussion or we can wait until another day.
Thanks for that update. I want to publicly thank Jason, you, Jessica, Nathaniel, everybody. Thank you so much for the work you guys did. You have a great reputation at the state and kept us in the loop on a daily basis. So thank you for that. Tanya, thank you for all the work you did in coordinating all these things, these updates and the work. There were times we had to move within an hour, two hours to get a letter put together, and you coordinated all that so efficiently. So I want to thank you for that. So I'm sure there's going to be lots of questions and feedback. So Commissioners, fire away. Go ahead, Commissioner Howell.
They just want me to go first for some reason. I break the ice, I guess. I don't know. You know, I think our biggest issue continues to be property taxes. And there's been numerous articles come out, and then we media the last few weeks regarding kind of the doubling down and effort to deal with the state level. I guess I'd like to just know strategically, if we are not actively pursuing solutions from the county's perspective, what can we anticipate will happen going forward? I mean, it seems to me, it seems to me the leadership has a very strong narrative that they are going to deal with this issue. And there's a number of ideas on the table, and I, some of these ideas, I think at a deep level, they don't make, well, some of them don't make a lot of sense to me, but, you know, anecdotally, if you don't understand how things work necessarily, some of them sound reasonably interesting, I think, to the public. So I'm not sure what to expect at this point. I feel like the county needs to get fully involved in maybe some really deep discussions and lobby, if you will, the legislators during the summertime on the, and I just wondering what your thoughts are regarding, what should we expect on this issue? If we don't engage anything from the county's perspective, what's going to happen, you think?
Well, Commissioner, first, I think you make a good point that you need to be actively engaged. Property tax is something that I think everybody's concerned about. A lot of voters are upset about it. I'm talking to candidates that are going door to door because they're in primaries and they hear a lot about property taxes. That being said, you know, how our system of property taxation is somewhat complex. So while voters, like it's on the minds of your constituents and voters, they don't necessarily understand how it all works. And unfortunately, that probably includes a decent amount of legislators. You know, if you're in the legislature and you serve on the tax committee in the House or the Senate, yeah, you probably get it. And there's a handful that aren't on the tax committees in either chamber, and they probably get it. But I will just tell you, there's a good number of legislators that don't know property taxation inside and out. And therefore, I think that makes it even more important that you're actively engaging and talking about what you see as solutions, which would primarily be solutions that wouldn't negatively impact the county's bottom line. You know, the state doesn't rely on property tax near as much as local units of government do. And so it can be easy for those folks at the state to say, well, we're going to make this change. It's not going to impact us that much. If it's a, if it's a change that impacts local government, that change can be enormous. And so I think it's starting to become overused, but there's the old saying, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. And I think that's very true when it comes to tax. In terms of what I'm hearing being talked about, there's disappointment that the, that we only went to $75,000 on the exemption instead of 100. I think you may see them try to come back. The statewide mill levy, I don't think they changed that at all, right? Did they just stay at 20? You know, there was, there were different bills that were vetoed by the governor, I think, one at 19, one at 19 and a half. I know that Adam Smith, the chairman of the House Tax Committee, thinks that ought to actually be 18 instead of 19 and a half. And, you know, that money goes to education, so that was going to be backfilled with SGF. So that's probably not something that bothers you, but it would give some, some degree of property tax relief to every one of your constituents. So those are the main things that are being talked about. You know, Jessica brought up Commissioner Howell's testimony on the constitutional amendment. Not just saying it because we, because we work for you guys, you know, that was actually something that I had not thought about. And so, again, not kissing up to the Commissioner, but when I heard that, I was like, you know, there's a little bit of brilliance there because it's absolutely true. There is no reason that if you're going to make a change there, and I think you guys are officially neutral on that, it needs to be done statutorily. And I think all of you need to be talking with legislators, we are too, about the fact that if you're going to do this, do it through statute. Because there's one guarantee we can make you. If that goes before the voters for a constitutional amendment, it will pass. The other guarantee we can make you is it will never be changed thereafter. It will not happen. And so, again, not to sound like a broken record, but I think that needs to be communicated as well, that if you're going to do this, you need to do this statutorily. So answer your question.
Yeah, yeah, I just, in my head, I've got about 10 different ideas floating around on how to deal with property taxes. But one of the things I advocated for, maybe not in my testimony, I don't think I did in my testimony, but I actually think since the state actually has two pieces of their property tax levy, one of them being a 1.5 mils for state office buildings, that's kind of getting close to that 19 or 19.5 or 18, that those proposals we're talking about, talking about shaving off one to two mils somewhere within that 21.5 mils. It seems obvious to me that they should be focusing on the 1.5 mils. And again, they want to delete some stuff out of statute like LAVTR. Let's delete the property taxes for state office buildings and hand that responsibility over to other sources of revenue. That, to me, is so simple because it creates almost a permanent, a permanent change on how we deal with the 21.5 mils. And by the way, the 20 mils was going to be reduced, but it would be backfilled with other sources of revenue. So it's almost a fungible discussion, if you will. But by dealing with the 1.5 mils, you create a permanent change in how we deal with state office buildings. They are, they're no longer property tax funded. They're funded through other revenues. And one other thought I had was, and this actually came to me just recently, but you know, the narrative they have is LAVTR and city-county revenue sharing programs, but this is a slush fund for local government. We tend to take that money and just grow government. That's their narrative. I don't think they understand Sedgwick County very well. There was a girl, a girl article the other day talking about what Johnson County's proposed $1.8 billion budget for next year. I think we compare ourselves with Johnson County. We look incredibly efficient and like we're just, it's like night and day between us and Johnson County. And yet, we're the two largest populated counties in the state of Kansas. And so what I'm getting back to, though, is what was it going with that? Go ahead. The slush fund, thank you. It occurred to me that rather than the state handing over cash for us to figure out what to do with the money, they should take back some obligations for state functions. We have 16 offices we manage on behalf of the state of Kansas. They should provide money for the election office, for example. Rather than letting local government provide property tax revenues to cover the cost of that election office, they should provide money for their state mandated functions. And there's a number of them, I think 16. So if they wanted to say, we wanted to, you know, distribute, if you will, a certain amount of money across the state of Kansas, we don't trust local government to make the right decisions. Why don't they actually just take back some of the unfunded mandates, actually begin to fund those from a state level? As another way to deal with that, what would have been LAVTR and city-county revenue sharing program? So again, I'm not suggesting that getting LAVTR was ever going to be a discussion, would ever be successful. I think they've, they made that really very clear. But to deal with the amount of revenue to be, you know, managed a different way, I think they could actually begin the discussion of actually taking back some responsibility. The tag office is going to be a discussion today, I'm pretty sure. That is a big problem for Sedgwick County. It's nearly $1 million going next year, I believe. And so property taxes are funding tag offices. Why are we doing that? That's, it's obviously a messed up policy for the state of Kansas. That's just one example. So I guess I have probably have some other questions to come, so we stop talking for just a minute.
Well, if you don't mind, I'll follow up on the property tax. One of the things that I've learned recently, some of the pressures that we have when we begin to lower our mill levy, there's an offset to sales tax. So we lower our mill levy and our one cent sales tax that is generated throughout the county. And Lindsay could probably explain the formula a little better. The formula's rather, well, it's a simple formula, but I don't, we, the summary is this, we lower our mill levy and it reduces the amount of sales tax we are able to garner of our proportion, and it just seems to be completely off-putting. So I'm trying to understand if that's a conversation. It seems like it's a bad formula. Lindsay, I don't know if maybe you could.
So the way the state formula is set up for sales taxes, the county shares it with the 20 cities. And so what happens is they look at population. So we are given credit for the unincorporated part of the county versus the cities. Half of the money is distributed based on that. The other half of the money is distributed based on our portion of levy dollars. So when we go in and reduce our mill levy rate intentionally and other, let's say, 17, 18, 19 cities take full advantage of that assessed value increase, keep their mill levy rate flat and generate more dollars through their levy because of that, it overall has a reduction on our portion of that overall levy. So just looking at the recommended budget we're going to talk about tomorrow, just not capturing 1% of that value costs us, based on 2023 numbers, $167,000 if every other city does what we kind of expect to happen, which is capture their value. So it's a formula that actually punishes.
Reduction of mill levy.
Reduction of mill levy.
It's, it's, it's counterproductive to, we're trying to lower our mill levy and property tax burden, but at the same time, we get double hit because it will lower our sales tax proportion, too. So I just think there's a, I think it's sensible to have that conversation. So I wanted to highlight that. I didn't want to talk about the treasurer and the fees. Those fees haven't been adjusted. According to Brandy Bailey, our county treasurer, for 30 years, we're the last county to have to come out of the general fund to subsidize the treasurer's office and the, on the tags. So that's a conversation we have to have. There's more in the 16 departments that we manage on behalf of the state. The last thing I think is just a question of your opinion that I would have. As we begin to build our legislative platform, do you have a recommendation or things that we could do differently to engage the South Central delegation? We talked about having roundtable discussions where we really sit down and help build the platform alongside our delegation so they have input as we're shaping it. There's been ideas. Is there something that you would recommend on how we best make sure our South Central delegation is at the table as we build our platform? So they're in the loop of what we're doing?
Yeah, I, Mr. Chairman, I I recognize and appreciate the goal of trying to engage the delegation from, as you build the platform. From a lobbyist perspective, the main benefit there is that they have buy-in and ownership, and it increases the likelihood that we're successful on, you know, more policy points. I think there's a little bit of a challenge in that not everybody in the legislature, including in our delegation, are the same. Pretty much two-party system, right? That becomes a three or four-party system when you really get into it. So that, I think, can create some challenges for you when you try to do a roundtable. It also has to be public. And sometimes that process of arriving at decision points on policy is not appealing for the public to see.
Sure.
It's the sausage-making process. My recommendation, and you certainly may want to go in a different direction. But what I think would allow you to be the most successful in getting their input would be your individual conversations with policymakers from our region that you know and trust. I think that allows you to get feedback. There are certain ideas that you may come up with that seem like they make really good sense, and they very well may make great sense. You get into conversations with Ty Masterson and Dan Hawkins and Blake Carpenter and some others. And no matter how good your idea is, if you hear from those three guys and a handful of others, this is never going to happen, that's a good indicator. We probably shouldn't put it on the platform. So I do think those conversations are beneficial for you as individual commissioners, commissioners to have as you start to build your plan.
It's helpful. Thanks, Jason. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you. And Jason, Jessica, thank you very much. This will be my eighth year of putting together a legislative agenda. Unfortunately, I won't be here to see it through, but the successes that you've had have been fantastic. Granted, we haven't gotten everything every year, although we know that going in. But the things that we have gotten are significant to the county. So I sincerely appreciate that. And I share a lot of the thoughts that Commissioner Howell and Commissioner Beatty shared. What I don't think the legislature understands, because a lot of them didn't come out of the local government, is the impact of all of their actions have as it ripples down to local government. For example, they did away with a mortgage registration fee. That transferred the cost to property tax. They did away with machinery and equipment taxes. That transferred to property tax. They are funding the tag office. That's going to cost us $1 million next year. That transfers it to property tax. So the actions that they take out there, even though they may be well-being, they don't understand that everything they do like that transfers it to. I knew that trying to get LAVTR and CCRS through was going to be a loser. And so therefore, we asked to kind of transfer that over to property tax so that we could reduce that. And they did exactly what I thought they were going to do, is that they just eliminated it. But those functions would have helped us lower property tax. So as we move forward with the next legislative agenda, I'm sure you're going to see some things on the tag office because we can't afford to take another $1 million out of local property tax to fund a state function. And there are so many state functions that we are funding today that we shouldn't be funding. So as we work towards actually the primary elections that are coming up and the general election coming up in the fall, every single one of those legislators are up for election. And as a result, I'm going to be speaking out on the impact of what they are doing so that the voters So that the voters uh can be asked, can start asking them the questions that, that why are the actions that you're taking transferring all of this burden to us? When the state's sitting on three billion dollars worth of, of funding up there, uh, it's not fair to our local taxpayers. Commissioner Howell and I had this discussion this morning. Uh, every taxpayer blames Sedgwick County, the county. And why is that? Because our, the appraiser, even though it doesn't work for us, works for P V D, is Sedgwick County Appraiser. All of the staff work for Sedgwick County. The bills come out of the Sedgwick County Treasurer and they have to write a check payable to Sedgwick County. So who gets the blame? The county gets the blame every time, even though if you take a look at my tax bill, and I'm sure any other tax bill, only about thirty percent of, of their total tax bill is county tax. The rest of it is school district, uh township, uh city tax, uh cemetery district, water district, all these other things. We have a hundred and twenty-five taxing agencies here in Sedgwick County alone. Hundred and twenty-five different governments can tax you, depending on where you live. We love government evidently. We love people that can, that tax you. Uh, again, but they, they come back and they blame Sedgwick County. So we need to get that word out. We need to let the public to understand. What the impact is that the legislature has on us each and every day and these taxpayers. We'd love to look, lower our mill levies. We just heard from Lindsay. It, last year we lowered our mill levy and it cost us not only the loss of the mill levy, but it also cost us in the one cent sales tax. This year I think we're going to try and lower the mill levy again. That's going to cost us even more. Uh, so we're trying to do what's right for our community, but. When, when we're the second lowest uh on mill levy in the entire state, Sedgwick County, out of a hundred and five counties, is the second lowest on the mill levy. We're doing our part, but we get blamed. So we need the legislature to understand the impact on, on local government. But, and. I, I will say this over and over again, as long as I'm sitting here in this position, uh, that we need to be partners with the legislature so that they understand exactly what they're doing. The, the uh constitutional amendment is the worst idea that I've heard in a long time. Uh, it sounds great. If they put it on the ballot, I'll probably vote for it. But uh, is it a good idea? Absolutely not. It's a terrible idea. So uh. Again, you got your hands full going into this next, next legislative agenda, because I think there's going to be some big issues that we're going to have. Uh, there's some big issues that are coming out of people uh that don't understand. There's a lot of talk on trying to get uh, uh, future leaders in this position to say that I will comply with a uh, the revenue neutral rate. Well, that's the stupidest thing again that you can do uh is because there's inflation. We actually got at one point five mills that go out to W S U every year. We, just the amount of money that goes W S U would make us either make large cut someplace else. Or, or violate the statute that tells us that we're going to do that. We, everyone is facing inflation. Everyone has to have a pay raise. But with revenue neutral rate, we can't do any of that. We have to pay the same amount. So it would mean we'd have to fire employees every single year in order to be able to do that. And then no one wants us to do that. Our entire organization is a service organization. That's what we do. And the main part of it is public safety. So I'm sorry that it's a soapbox, but I'm going to stay on that soapbox for the next six months. Uh, and make sure that the public understands the impact that that legislature is having on our local government. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just.
Yes, please.
Commissioner Dennis made a point that I, I think Commissioner Howell was starting to, to make, and then we started talking about something else, but. To the point of having the second lowest mill levy um uh in the state. Gets to the point that you were starting to make when you compare uh Sedgwick County to Johnson County. Uh, and I think that is a challenge. I think we get frustrated here as a county um about. Some of the treatment that you get from the state legislature um and a lot of decisions that get passed down and the unfunded mandates and. By no means are those a good thing. But there's a hundred and five counties, and this is, this is the point. There are a hundred and five counties and they are different. Um. I think Sedgwick County does a really good job of trying to control costs, keep, keeping the mill levy uh low. That's not the case with every other county. And so I, I think some of what you see in terms of. The feeling towards local government from some of those folks in the legislature. It ends up being applied to all hundred and five counties, which, which isn't fair. Uh, but it gets back to my point of us needing to probably um encourage you as commissioners to communicate even more with our legislative delegation. Um. Our contract's up for renewal, so I probably shouldn't admit this at one of the contracts up for renewal, but I didn't realize, I'm your lobbyist and I didn't realize that you had the second lowest mill levy rate. I didn't know that. Um, I'll guarantee your legislative delegation doesn't know that. Uh, I needed to know that, so thank you for telling me. Um, and the delegation needs to know. I'm going to be talking about it, but so you do, you need to do so also.
Well, I had some color to it. They have eighty thousand more citizens. They have a one point eight billion dollar budget compared to our five hundred and seventy-ish million dollar budget. Yeah, it's significant with only eighty thousand more citizens in the county. So we do a really good job here. A really good job of efficiency and effectiveness and, and, and tax stewardship. So keep telling that story.
The, the one thing I might add to what Jason is saying, and in particular is the tax committee. So yes, talking to our legislative delegation is really important. But so much happens in committee. That's where you have the opportunity to squelch bad ideas. It's where you can help improve things most quickly and, and effectively. So I think it's important that we're also looking at the makeup of those committees and, and visiting with those individuals as well who may be outside of our area. Um, it's a, this is a tough year. This is the hardest year to do a lot of um. Pro-session work, pre-session work, because everyone is up for reelection. And in theory, we technically don't know who is going to be on all of these committees like we will know next year at this time. So it is a little bit difficult, but we still have some good ideas. And if they're on tax today, chances are they want to stay on tax, provided the voters send them back. Um, but I think it's important that, yes, we prioritize um additional outreach and communication from all of you to delegation. But also a more targeted look at those committees and, and we are here and happy to help kind of identify, provide contact information, facilitate that outreach. But don't sleep on those other individuals because those relationships are equally as important.
If I can, thank you. Um, thank you, thank you, Nathaniel. Thank you. Um. A couple of comments and questions. So thank you for grasping this statute versus constitutional amendment. I, I'm all in and we'll do what we can to continue that. And maybe. Maybe most of them are not educated about that as much, but we'll work on that. Um. You're right. I think Jim's got a good point about uh. Maybe they, instead of worrying about lowering their mill levy, if they would start funding some of these mandatory departments. And then maybe they put a hook on there that you will make some kind of percentage reduction of your mill levy. If we did fund your department. I don't know if dollar for dollar is the right answer, but it could be even dollar for dollar. We could do a mill levy correlated reduction. Um, so that, and then uh. The uh, I have a question on, in the, back to the property tax world. Is there any, I know it's, it's complicated as you said. But, but the driving force is the, is the increased property value, the appraisal process, the assessed value. That that's what people don't really understand. Is there a chance that, is that locked in stone? Or can that, can P V D, could we support stuff to say, look at your evaluation process? That, that's really got the highest inflation factor that ends up right, the right check. Or is that, is that P V D process eleven percent for, for residential and twenty-five commercial? Is all that just locked in stone and we can't even go there? The eleven and twenty-five is constitution. But what about the ninety, what is it? Ninety-five, ninety percent of a, of market value they have to be at? Or ninety-five percent on the.
Uh, Commissioner Meister, Justin Wyner, County Councilor, I'll, I'll try to address that. Lindsay Porter says correct, the, the percentage. Of the assessed value for commercial and residential that is set in the Kansas constitution. But when you get to some of the other things like that, you talk about the ninety, hundred, ten percent. My recollection, I'm looking over at Lindsay to double check, is that statutory? So there are certain things that are statutory and also some of that's by P V D directive. Um. So there may be some flexibility, I think, in some of that. I can't say, I don't know what an alternative would look like, but there, but, but it's not constitutional.
I'm just thinking, if, if you have trying times like massive inflation, blah, blah, blah. Like that we had last couple of years, and then they're still tied to this ninety percent valuation. I mean, if, could there ever be flexibility, say, all right, there's. Unique circumstance, I don't even COVID or whatever, where. P V D needs to authorize the appraiser to exempt himself or exempt themselves from the ninety percent. And, and go to what maybe the market in your, in your county would, would accept, maybe a, maybe within all the new property, fifty percent is eighty percent, seventy, whatever. Anyway, flexibility, that, that might, is that, would that be worth us putting on an agenda to try to sell or is that an uphill battle in your opinion? I don't know.
I'm not sure.
That's the driving force, right? That's, everybody says, well, my taxes went up, of course, because that also ends up being. Your value, I didn't mean to interrupt. Your valuation goes up and then all of a sudden, not only your property tax check is up, but then you get another bill from your, from your home insurance company says, hey, your house is worth more. So here's another hundred dollars a month you go on, on home insurance.
I think it's.
It trickles.
Sorry. Um, I, it certainly worth having the conversation. I said earlier, not everybody in the legislature understands our system of property taxation. Uh, and you got into the weeds pretty good there. Um, and I'll guarantee you, there are, yes. Um, there are plenty that don't know that, wouldn't understand that. So I, I think a lot of folks, when you say. If, if we just had a three or four percent cap, um, you know, that would help, would that control things? And the people into people will say, yes, that's an alternative to that, that I think probably hasn't been considered. Uh, but you know, to Justin's point, um, that's statutory or even through the regs and it's not constitutional, which. Means the legislature could change that just by virtue of an act by the legislature.
But you might be right. You might have hit on something with, again, conversation instead of, we have all kinds of property owners that say, my, my, that, my valuation went up fifteen percent, you know, like whatever, blah, blah, maybe. I don't know, I have to ask Lindsay and other experts, but maybe capping the valuation. Rate versus your actual mill levy and whatever. I don't know. Just a thought. So thanks for letting me say a few words.
Certainly. Okay, Mr. Chairman. Well, thank you, Chairman. Um, just a couple of things. Um. I, I was able to get uh thirteen thousand sale, pieces of sales data from last year's homes, homes that sold in, in previous year. And I plotted that. It's a very interesting plot. See Lindsay reacting here. Do you remember that plot? I love this plot because what it, so if someone says my, oh, my property taxes changed, uh, I'm gonna say, they always, they almost always say property taxes. What they mean is valuation. My valuation went up twenty percent. And it sounds horrible. And you know, the people would say, when you hear that one person, that one person's narrative, you get the idea that everyone's went up twenty percent. The reality is a whole lot of them didn't go up two percent. Someone went up zero percent. Some of them actually went down in value. And those went up higher than the average. We tend to hear those folks loudly and clearly. And uh, what typically is really going on there is a correction in the market, if you will. Someone was undervalued. In fact, we can tell you in, in the uh. The ratio study that's done yearly by the P V D actually would tell you that Sedgwick County has historically been very much undervaluing property. And actually, it's kind of frustrating to me that we're not closer to that plus or minus five, or plus or minus ten percent. Um, I, I think the appraiser actually targets a ninety percent valuation. Um, he doesn't want to be over a hundred percent because that creates a lot of extra work for his office. So you like, he, he really tries to hit that ninety percent number, but in doing, in, in trying to do that, he tends to undervalue even below ninety percent. Which again, um. If you fix that at some point on, on individual property basis, that might jump that value up. And there's maybe other things going on. Maybe there's. Uh, nearby properties that have uh higher values or whatever. But we use property valuations as a way to create a fairness of who should pay for the government, the burden of government. That's, that's the basis for property taxes. And so if someone lives at a very expensive home, they pay more taxes. Someone lives in a very, you know, modest home, for example. And so we use that as a, as a uh indicator of what the fair share of government burden is for each property owner, uh for every, every, every citizen of the county. If someone says they, I mean, there's one up twenty percent. So I, I sort of looking at these thirteen thousand values, just, I, I love to share this with you and the legislature for that matter. And I plotted, you know, I plotted, what's the latest uh valuation by the county appraiser? But what did they sell for? Well, you run a trend line through all that data and um. Uh, the sales price on average was about three point three percent above the praise value on thirteen thousand sales. Which tells you he's pretty close. Um, there were some that began, that were over. You know, o- over that trend line, which would indicate they actually sold them for less than they praised value. And that's frustrating for anybody, anyone to say, I, I've been paying more than, more of the government burden than I should have had to pay. My house sold for less than what the, the county said it was worth. And we understand that. So we encourage, we encourage appeals. But when you see, when you see that data, it tells me that if this is the, if this is the policy we're going to follow to fund government, that actually isn't the problem. Uh, in fact, I, I, I've been, I've been calling Karen Tyson quite a bit. She's chairman of the Senate Tax. And um, one of my, one of my frustrations was, is when the county appraiser actually makes one of these course corrections and say. This one went up twenty percent. Usually what that is, is a, is a correction in, they missed something and maybe they were underpaying. Or their property was undervalued in previous years. And my, my question is almost always, well, if you sold your house today, would it sell for that number? And they almost always say yes. So the reality is it was undervalued in previous years. They don't like to change. One of my arguments is the appraiser doesn't care what, what the value was, only care about what the value is. And so then the percentage of change is actually not, not something they're focused on. So we have a lot, a lot of narrative about that number, but frankly, the appraiser doesn't care. They're just trying to say, is it correct right now? And uh, with that, if that's really our focus, I would argue that he's actually done a pretty good job. The real focus, the real problem should be from the legislature is focused on the size of government, not the process. So we're so focused on the process. It doesn't really, and they, they actually will tell you, we're not capping local government. You guys can raise the mill levy all you want to. Okay, but they are messing with the fairness of two houses side by side. Or one just sold and one didn't, and they're exactly the same. And one's going to be much higher value than the other. And the constitution says uniform and equal. I don't know how they get around that problem. The constitution says uniform and equal. And yet two houses side by side are exactly the same. Yet one is substantially different value than the other because of the four percent cap. I don't, that, that policy just seems. To violate the, the principle of, of, of uniform and equal. So um, there's a lot to be said. I, I'm doing what I call tax talk. And when I do tax talk, one of my goals is I use the data from Lindsay primarily. But I do tax talk and I, I, I talk to random people all over the county. And when they, I get done, here's what they say. You're not the problem. They see that we are extremely efficient. The problem I see is if there's an inefficient county over here, they're spending money frivolously and are wasting money and burning cash for heat. And we're being efficient over here. When the state legislature puts a, a solution in place to fix this county, they're impacting us. And we're not the problem. And people keep telling me over and over, you're not the problem. And to the previous point over here, my tax bill, twenty percent goes to Sedgwick County and eighty percent goes to other stuff. Which gives me to, and I have a, a proposal, actually have to uh hopefully um. Shift the attention to where does, where do the dollars go and what do they do? I think that's, that's a bigger discussion. People don't know, even though we give them the data. Very few people actually look at the data and understand what they're looking at. They don't understand that I actually have nine jurisdictions. And they usually have somewhere around that number of jurisdictions that are taxing them. And what do you get for the dollars to that jurisdiction? What do they do with that money? No one's thinking that through. They just know my total taxes went up and I'm upset. And Sedgwick County, I'll tell you over and over again, my, my biggest concern actually is this, that we have honed in on efficiency to the point, it actually is not sustainable. And that's the problem. So I talk about the revenue neutral rate and I start talking about how are we going to cut sixteen million dollars out of our budget this year? It's, it freaks people out. They get really upset because they're like, they don't really want that to happen. And I'm talking about things like laying off nine-one-one people and laying off paramedics and laying off sheriff's officers. No one thinks that's reasonable. They say, well, just get rid of the frivolous spending. Well, there isn't any, because we're efficient. So to go find sixteen million dollars is going to devastate this county. That's not reasonable. And by the way, I just talked to a, a person from A F P just the other day. And they don't support the K P I position. I don't know if you aware of that or not, but they do not support that. They said that they would support reasonable growth in the budget because they, they understand inflation impacts what we do here. And so again, to go back to the tax lead, which by the way, I supported the tax lead. Um, I think it was reasonable law. Um, the problem with the legislature is they didn't like the tax lead because. The problem with the legislature is they didn't like the tax law because they felt it was too, too many loopholes in the tax leg. That's why they got rid of it and moved towards other, to this R and R idea. But the tax law was based on the idea that it's, it takes new construction and population growth and, and inflation. And it calculates a, a reasonable growth rate for the budget. And if you want to exceed that, then you have to do some things to basically add, add services to the government. And you need to go through the process of, of being on record and maybe talking to the electors about, uh, doing those, changing up government to add more things. But the tax that was reasonable, I, I don't, I don't know that I really minded that. So I guess I would just throw out there, I'm, I'm not against the tax law. Cause it, it does include reasonable calculations for what rate should the government grow its budget? And I think that that's, that's the argument we should be making because R and R assumes that you're going to stay under some arbitrary number forever. And that, that no one can do that. I don't care if they did it one year, then I can't do it forever. It's impossible. And for us to stand under the R and R would be extreme. I, I think we, I can argue, our, our, we are so efficient in Sedgwick County. It is shocking that we've gotten none. We've got less staff, providing more services. Something's got to give. And I, and so the legislature feels like it's their job to rein in local government. In my opinion, it's, it's the electors' job. If they don't like what we're doing, they need to be told how inefficient we are and, and find someone else to run against us. That's the way to solve the problem, not to say that someone who's a different level of government, it's their responsibility to fix the problem at local government. That doesn't make sense at all. Only, my only person, the only boss I answer to is the electors. That's and my wife. But that's it. Well, yeah, she's elected too. And she voted for me, I think, anyway. No, but anyway, I don't think it's their job to rein us, to rein us in. I think that, so again, to educate, I talk about tax talk and I educate details about property taxes and actually taxes. Believe it or not, we're actually not an outlier. We're actually middle, look, go to the tax foundation website and look where we are. We're mid pack, we're right smack down in the middle of 50 states. We're not, I hear the narrative, we're a high tax state and there is a way to find that data to back that idea up. If you look at all taxes, I actually, I think we're actually mid pack, we're right in the middle. Um, so we're not get bad in, in terms of counties, we're again, we're low on the county level. So I actually think we've got a pretty good deal going on here. Uh, our cost of living is lower, our taxes are, are middle of the 50 states. And we start seeing the fact that the grass is greener because you know, this state doesn't have income tax and this state doesn't have sales tax. But they still, they still fund government other ways. They, they do. The reality is if you, if you make money, spend money and have stuff, you're, you're probably going to be unimpacted in your total tax burden if you move to another state. It doesn't really change much. Most states within half, or within a half percent of our total tax burden. You can take Kansas and go push minus half percent total tax burden and almost every state falls into, into that band. So I don't know that we have huge problems for the state legislature to focus on how to clamp down local government. Because when they do that, we're going to give up 911 EMS sheriff's office, roads and shut down roads, close bridges and things like that. It's just, it is insanity to think we would do that type of, it's irresponsible to, to think that's the answer. And so the only other thing I could do that at this point, because they've, we've tied our hands is to raise the mill levy. Well, that is, that is a nonsense answer. Um, I don't want to raise the mill levy, but the answer is we have to find a way to. To educate, not just our electors, not just the people we serve, but even the legislature. And by the way, see what some of those people, some of those people actually wrote, wrote bills. And I, I, I listened to questions to those legislators and I could tell by their answer, they don't even understand that, they don't understand property taxes themselves. And no offense to anybody, I've talked to lots of people in local government. And I say, do you know what a mill levy is? And, and their eyes blaze over like they're scared to answer the question. They don't understand what a mill levy is. And so we have people who are passing laws and creating, drafting bills and sitting in elected seats. But don't understand the basic parts of how taxes work. And so we have a lot of work to do to educate the legislature on, on, on the fact that we are efficient and it's not their problem. I have so many things I would love to say here. I do have a couple of question, questions here. A while back, I was talking to someone who knows, who knows the answer, but. That person said that this idea of having to share the local sales tax, that actually is. Something that's been discussed in the legislature on, on how that, again, I know Wichita tried to lobby to shift it in their favor years ago. They kind of gave up on that idea. But the fact that sales taxes not have to be shared. At all, there's, there, any municipality can pass a sales tax, it doesn't have to be shared. The problem is. You know, if a city passes a sales tax, they don't share with anybody. If we pass a sales tax, we share it with everybody. It's this way it is right now. The, uh, Mike Taylor, I don't think Nathan Aberland was involved in this, but Jay Hall, who represents KAC and LPM. They lobbied, I think in favor of cities, uh, not in favor of counties. And when this discussion came up in the legislature, they lobbied against the idea of allowing counties to pass a sales tax that they could retain that for themselves to lower property taxes. And I think one of our, one of our proposals we have to talk about is when I use, when we use property taxes to fund quality of life stuff. That's almost always where the argument goes about how wasteful we are. Some people don't care about spending their property tax dollars on things. I don't want to name them specifically, but there's a, about nine things we do here in the county that are considered quality of life agencies. And when they use property taxes to fund those, some people don't like that. So I like to shift that set of spending to sales tax. And I like to invite Wichita to be with us. If they don't want to do it with us and they're not committed to lowering the, the mill levy, I like to go it alone. I'd like to see us pass a sales tax. If we, we, if we're with Wichita, a quarter cent sales tax generates about $35 million right now. And that $35 million would be enough to fund, I think, all of the quality of life things for Wichita and Sedgwick County together. If we want to go it alone, an eighth of a cent sales tax would be enough, I think, to fund all of our quality of life stuff. And so I'd like to see us move forward, but we can't share that money. And so my point would be, I'd like to see us offset a quarter cent for Sedgwick County. If we, if we retain the whole thing ourselves, we'd lower the property taxes by five mills roughly, a little more than five mills. And I think we ought to ask the electors, I would like to commit that if we see a sales tax, we would offset property tax dollar for dollar. We will lower the mill levy and I think that's part of the answer. And I've got about 10 other ideas, but I, I'll, I'll just share, I guess, two more thoughts before I wrap up. I talked to someone in leadership on the House side. They do not support the constitutional, leadership does not support the constitutional amendment. They're terrified of that, of doing it wrong. They want to do it in statute. I think the statute is the answer. Karen Tyson herself said, she's in favor of the constitutional amendment. However, she's also in favor of the idea if there's a gross error and they have an evaluation, that person doesn't get to live with that benefit forever. There's a way for that to be corrected by the appraiser. If there's a miss, if there's a miss, uh, uh, miss. Evaluation is, is off by some percentage that the, you know, they made a mistake initially. They can, they can actually fix that. That would, that'd be a caveat to the new proposal that's coming out of the Senate. That's in the new bill. I think it makes it slightly better. And then I just want to just wrap up and say. I agree with the previous comments. I think we have some of the best lobbyists in the state. We get stuff done in Sedgwick County. We're very aggressive in getting our, our stuff done through the state. And I think you guys should be credited for helping us be successful that way. I look at other cities around and I don't think they have anything to talk about in terms of success. So the fact that we've got multi-page paper here of good things, I think is very impressive. And I just want to say thank you for your work.
Very good. Hey, Tony? Let's just say no, or?
I don't have anything else. I just want to thank Jason and Jessica and Nathaniel again for being here. I have a running list for 2025 legislative platform and we'll start to have that discussion, I think, uh, late fall. So I don't have anything else at this point.
Kelly, good.
Okay. All right. I think we're good. Thanks again for coming, making the stop and updating us. Appreciate all the work you guys do.
For the future. And I have appreciated this format. It feels more collaborative. It's, it's fine to stand at the podium in an official meeting, but I think for the first time doing this in staff meeting, I found it to be really advantageous for my conversation.
Good feedback. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, you're welcome to come tomorrow morning if you wanted to then. 9:00 AM, see you then.
He's always there.